Executive Committee to Order, the committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live board committee meetings online at TCAPS dot net slash board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. This, the committee has set aside time for public comment. I'm guessing we do not have public comment, so unless the kids want to give a public comment. No, not so much. Okay, we'll move right on to procedural items. We are at the draft meeting minutes portion of the agenda. Are there any changes to the draft meeting minutes? I don't think there are. I know, I don't think there are. Okay, so hearing no changes, the minutes will remain as posted. Next item is the resolution in support of the Northwest Education Services General Fund Operating Budget for twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six. I will refer to that anyway.
So every year, it's required by law that our board has to weigh in, is the best way I can say it, on the intermediate school districts' general fund budget. So they have provided that with us. You know, every year we have the option to have them come in, but I think, you know, we've had no issues with their budget on the past. There is a fund equity sharing policy that the ISD has, that if it does, in their special ed side, the law requires us to weigh in on the general fund side. But we've had a lot of support from ISD, especially with mental health, thirty-one N resources. So administration doesn't see any issues at all with their budget or concerns. So my recommendation would be for the board to be in support of their general fund operating budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, and to move that to consent unless the committee has any issues with that.
I do not have any issues. Nope. So you, either any questions?
Actually, I was the candidate this afternoon.
Okay, okay, so we'll go ahead and move that to the consent calendar for the full board. Okay, next item, recognition and appreciation for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five district retirees resolution. And I'll refer to Connie, defer to Connie Taylor.
Right, so we're gonna just, I'm asking the board to adopt a resolution applauding our number of retirees that we have this year. We're currently standing at thirty-nine.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah, lots and counting. So if any more come on, we will make sure we get those added right up until the board meeting itself. But something we do annually, just to thank them for their service, and hopefully you have to save the date for the, on retirement recognition, which is at the end of May. Sorry, I don't have the exact date on the tip of my tongue, twenty. Thank you very much. And again, we're gonna do that over at Montessori. It's a wonderful way to celebrate all of our retirees.
Yeah, lots of familiar names on that list, so yes, absolutely. So good, 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 good. So that, the resolution will actually be read also at our next board meeting, and we'll acknowledge all those retirees, so that's great. Okay, next item on the agenda, teen pregnancy awareness proclamation resolution. So again, Connie.
Yes, so similar to last year, May is actually Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month, and so we have asked the board previously, and I once again recommend that the board pass to the full board for review and discussion, the resolution, and essentially just points out the need to work on prevention and awareness of teen pregnancy.
Any other question?
No, it'll be the same proclamation as last year.
Correct. Yep, we had some edits and stuff on, it's that exactly back.
Okay.
So can I back up? You know, I may have misspoke with the Northwest ed budget. I actually think we need that as a discussion item, because there is a resolution. And so just to be on the state side, I'd like to put that as a discussion item, just for the board.
In case there's any kind of.
With the resolution, yeah, with the ISD budget.
Okay.
Again, no questions, but I think it's better, because the board actually has that resolution, and it's a roll call vote, to have it versus consent.
Okay.
If you're good with that.
Yep, so we'll move back to full discussion.
Discussion.
It may be okay, but I don't want to take any chances.
Okay, perfect. And then as for the teen pregnancy prevention and awareness, we'll move that to the full board for review and discussion as well.
Yep.
Okay, we are on D, moving on to E right now, Scott, just so you know.
Oh, man, we're making progress here.
Yeah, we waited a little bit, and then, no, it's okay. So we'll go ahead and do the agenda review for May twelfth meeting. So call to order, pledge of allegiance, review and approval of the agenda, we'll have recognition of our TCAPS twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five retirees, and read our, not proclamation, our resolution, thank you. Then we'll move on to public comments, superintendent's report, legislative updates and district highlights. Then we'll move into board committee reports and discussions. So curriculum committee, which will be from April twenty-ninth, reported out by trustee Ballinger, secretary Ballinger. Board finance committee, from today, May first, reported out by trustee Hardy. And then the board executive, executive committee today, May first, and that'll just be a change to me. Just a little change on that, the May twelfth is just, I'll do the report out for board executive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Next will be the sustainability committee report out, which is from the April seventeenth meeting, report out by trustee Schmidt. And then the superintendent, Board of Education Student Advisory Council, which was from April fifteenth, that will be reported out by Ty Schmidt, trustee Schmidt. And then board office hours from April twenty-fourth, report out by trustee Pack. And then Scott will do the board office hours on May twenty-second, Scott Newman-Bale, and that will be a virtual meeting.
I've got two, I've got two things here. One is Josie emailed today and was hoping to be able to do an MASB report out from the summer leadership conference that they're.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had it, yeah, I did have it.
Yep, yep.
I actually printed that out to bring with me, and I forgot to.
That's okay.
And then the.
Board office hours will be. Yep. And the other thing that I, I'm gonna be looking for some clarity, and so the sustainability committee, this is a little bit of a thing that came up when Holly was with us. The, Ty has brought it up as well, of an issue that, what, whether that committee is considered a district work group committee or a board committee. And, and there's a really important distinction. So if it's a board committee, in the past, when we've had board committees, that is a committee such as this, where we have three board members in that element. When, when we, when Holly asked to form that sustainability committee, it was my understanding, as the board had put two board members on there versus three, that it was a district committee, much like the Health and Wellness Committee, in that way, has had two. Ty has brought up the point that, that he has a document from MASB in his training that shows, when you do have board members, more than one, on there with a decision, it can be considered a public meeting, which then we have to open and have the public invite and all of that, that quite honestly, you know, sometimes some, a lot of these meetings, we're trying to figure out where we're at, there, it's not an official action of the board. So I think we've got a little bit of a confusion problem. A of, I do need the board to give me some clarity with the sustainability committee, and I think also, just to declare the wellness and nutrition, that in my mind, those are district committees. And then I think the board does have to come to some resolution in their thoughts, that should we even have any, or especially two board members on any of those committees?
Okay.
Like, like, you know, the, the, the Health and Wellness was done originally because the USDA required one board member, and we had one on there. When Beth came on the board, she requested to also be on there, so we went ahead and said, okay, no reason not to have two. And so, you know, that was, then, you know, kinda, we replicated that for sustainability in that way. And I do think we're blurring a line of a board committee that completely changes the structure, the Open Meetings Act, all those things with that, versus a district committee. And so, you know, I think in my superintendent's report is where maybe it makes sense, or, you know, if you guys think, another, another way to do that, to bring clarity to that, you know, so that.
What do you mean in your superintendent's report?
Well, I could say that, you know, I have, we, we've had these committees, and that I need some clarification.
Oh, okay, oh, I see what you mean.
You know, from that standpoint, from the board, of what original intent is. And, and I do think the board needs to have a discussion of whether we should or should not have any board members, or at very least, I think, at most, maybe one, because of, Ty shared the document with the board, that shows that, you know, what, what MASB kind of feels are issues of, of that.
Type of committee.
In, in the Open Meetings Act, and the public nature of it, all that, that, you know.
They didn't give you any criteria?
I mean. They do, and essentially, it basically kinda says that if you have board members there that are making decisions and recommendations to the board, that therefore is a public group.
And that's not what we've done.
That's.
We've not done that, neither one of those. It's been a discussion.
Right.
And the question there is, who's steering the committee?
And that's, and again, that's a part of, right, and so like, I think, when Holly was there, she kinda felt maybe it was this board that she should be leading it. I had a difference of opinion, to be honest with you, and Scott weighed in a little bit, you know, in an email to her of, you know, he felt it was the district committee, you know, that's why we had two, not three. And so, you know, because honestly, in our sustainability committee, we did have some random public people just come.
Yeah.
And it comes, you know, and it honestly, you know, it, I think some staff were like, okay, who's running this, what is it?
Yeah.
You know, all that, and so, I, you know, I mentioned to Scott, you know, and, and he thought, bring it up here, and Ty is well-known, so, and I think, you know, like, Ty was fine, like, if it's a district committee, that's fine, but I think we need to clarify that.
Okay, and you think to do it during your superintendent's report, this is added as like a discussion item?
You can if you want. That's why I'm bringing it up now, so that I would like clarity on it, and just to say, because, you know, on the website, you know, Ty has a good point, we kinda have, it's under board committees, you know, because we put people there when we selected board committees originally, into those. And so I think, I think there's that declaration of what it is for sure, and then if it's a district committee, I think there does need to be a little conversation about board members and roles, for sure.
Yes.
But also, you know, kinda that MASB document of what, you know, it can't be, you know.
Well, I think some clarity too, on what that committee's function is.
Yeah.
Because in my opinion, most committees, if they're working committees, they have a purpose that also includes, when you accomplish this purpose, you consider whether you go into perpetuity, or whether you come to an end.
Yeah, but, but again.
None of that's been addressed.
I, I agree, I agree with you.
And if it's a district committee, that's kinda my call.
Yes.
You know, and so like you said, if it's a district committee, really, in my mind, it's me or staff, you know, under administration. And you know, that's the way I feel, like, both of those committees are. Inversely, our, this, this one, finance and curriculum, is one hundred percent under the board's purview, you know, in the element, and makes recommendations to the board, you know, makes recommendations to, you know, to me, to have staff do presentations on certain topics and stuff.
Right.
Where this is more of a district working, you know, group, that, you know, and that's, that's the way that I've always, and I think we've always functioned. Otherwise, I have a little bit of chaos of who's in a meeting, who's not, public, well, we think this, and we want you to do this, and that, and we're just trying to figure out, like, what work we're trying to do first.
Right, right.
You know?
I agree. And this, I, I, I mean, what's your opinion on discussion versus, I mean, I think maybe we add it as a discussion item.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
You know, and I think then the board, you know, we, we have a discussion item anyway over committee assignments, so what we could do is put board committees and, and assignments, and that's the point where we could clarify.
Under nine A?
Yeah.
Board committee updates?
Yeah.
Okay. Change it to board committee update and assignments.
I could say that, from past experience, if they're non-moting members and they don't chair the committee, then it's not a board committee per se. You're there, and for information purposes, but you don't, if there's a vote, you don't get to vote, you're simply.
Right, you're there as kind of a ex facto, you know, you know, give some thoughts, give those things, but, you know, really, again, I think it's an administrative committee, if that's simple.
Reinforcement purposes only.
Yeah.
But then you can't invite the public, because then, I mean, right?
Well, it is not, we invite the public, but we have certain people, we're, we're doing work, so we have people we want to work with, you know. So for instance, the sustainability committee with Holly, we selected random, you know, people, the community that does that work, whether it's the children's garden, or Interlock in their sustainability director.
Emily.
Yeah, Emily, we have different people that are there, but again, that was really, I was doing that under the auspice and thought of, I was doing it as an administrative committee that was putting that work together, and then we, as a team, will work with them, and then at some point, maybe I have a recommendation or thought from that committee to the board.
Right.
Versus it being a board committee that says this, that, we're gonna do this.
But that's, I meant, community members that are part of the committee.
Correct.
Yes, similar to wellness, and like, we used to have lots of committee members come, or community members come to that, but I mean, just random community members that show up at the committee meetings.
Right, it just isn't, it's, it's a district, it's our, it's our internal work.
Right.
You know, like, I don't really want to have a meeting that we're still figuring out what we're doing, and then having people come, well, what are you doing? You know, it's like, it just doesn't, it, it doesn't fit.
Yeah.
You know?
I would suggest that certainly, the board member doesn't chair that committee.
Yeah.
I think that should be clear.
The board member doesn't vote in that committee.
I think that should be clear, but at this point, we don't really have a formally acknowledged committee chair in there.
You need to appoint.
Well, no, we don't, because that's, again, it's, it's my, you know, it's my, my team, like, it, myself or one of my team members lead that, much like wellness and nutrition, like, that really is, like, Misty, you know, that work is leading that on my behalf.
And that's a real thing, remember?
Dan actually chairs that committee.
And, right, yeah.
Well, somebody's gotta lead the meeting.
But again, it's, it's administration.
Yeah, well, that's all I'm suggesting, is somebody other than a board member ought to be leading that.
Absolutely, yeah.
And the other thing about sustainability, it could turn into an unbalanced committee without a lot of difficulty.
But again, that's, that's my purview, you know, of figuring all that out, you know, and that's kinda what I'm trying to say here, is, you know, in my mind, this is my role in, in a committee that I'm in charge of running and, and input, you know, on that. Board member wants to give input to the committee, give input to me, that's great, but, you know, like, as far as what that work is, the agenda, you know, anything that comes to the board goes through me in my mind.
And do you think we still need that, I guess we can talk about this during the discussion, but do we still need that as a report out on our agendas?
Also, also your purview of how you want to go about that.
Who's, is Dan typically in charge of facilitating the meeting?
This is, the, he's the health and wellness committee, he is. I've, I've been, it was my thought to be rolled, I was leading the sustainability.
And you gotta report out on it.
You know, but, but I guess the question is, is, you know, in, in my opinion, as a district work group, it should flow up through one of our three existing board committees, is the proper way to do that, like, you know, maybe sustainability comes here, or finance, because it does have a lot to do with operations and buildings and those kind of things, from that standpoint, versus, like, if I had every committee, district work group come to the board, you'd be here a while.
Right.
You know, like, I guess my question is, is why is this one more than that one?
I agree.
But if the board wants that, so be it, but I just need that clarity.
The only reason, I think, to consider too, a little bit curriculum, is because ultimately, from what I understand, a lot of the activity, you want student input and student responsibility.
And I'll let you all debate on where you think it maybe feeds up to for reporting, you know, but I think either of those would be fine, you know, but I just, like I said, it, I'm kinda like, I, you know, Holly wanted the, that committee, again, I think that was built out of the thought of students had asked for some opportunity and led, and I think that, you know, forming that district committee was the opportunity to have students, to have various stakeholders, all that, work with me to come up with thoughts, what can we do, what can't, what, what can be student-led, all that, and then I'll work through that, and maybe, again, it's a committee update, or the committee may go, hey, this is great, John, we want the whole board to hear this. You know, not any different than our, you know, a work group that we may have on career and college readiness, you know, in the future. You know, we've had certain things, we've brought, and the board says, you know, or the committee would say, I think this would be really good for the whole board to hear, you know, no, no different in my mind.
But not every, every time.
And right now, that's the way we have, is we have, you know, the two, the two that are, you know, kinda questionable, who they are, are every time at the board, and to me, it should be the three board committees that are there.
Right, I agree.
And those others are district committees that report to the three committees of the board, and then from there, if that committee wanted to come up to the board for that, we'll do a full presentation.
And that's part of the reason I deferred to Dan, when I was trying to report out on health and wellness.
Yeah, yeah.
Is because Dan really had a much better sense of what was going on there.
Yeah, and like I said, that's where it fits in, if the board wants to say, we want that, that, you know, district group to report through, you know, monthly or every month, or whatever administration thinks, to the curriculum committee, or the finance committee, or executive committee, have that, you know, but I just, we've got some confusion, right?
Yeah, I agree. I've kind of always felt like that, because when I started, we used to have an HR and a, a policy committee.
And a communications committee separate.
Yeah, and so we combined and adjusted, and, you know, and then, then all of a sudden, these get added back on without a lot, I mean, you know.
Like I said, the fact that those have three, these have two, like, it just, you know, and like I said, I do think it'd be good for the board to take a look at that document that Ty had shared of MASB, like I say, and, and I just. um, that Ty had shared of M A S B, like I say, and, and, and I just, I don't want to get to the point where we're, we're violating a little bit of O M A, because of board member activity in, in a district committee. And I do worry a little bit that more than one board member could get, get in there.
Yeah.
And so I need you guys to look at that and, and give your thoughts on that.
Okay.
Uh, fine either way, but, you know, I think Ty's questioning a little bit, based on his training, whether what this document says shows that, like, two members there might be a violation. Again, and, and maybe there's a way to, to be very careful and not for it to be, but I think that you better have that debate.
Yeah, good, okay.
Well, then, I would also suggest as part of the debate, you need to consider whether you need to have it as rotating board member.
And that's a, and that's an idea, and we, we obviously do that with this committee.
Because I think some of the balance on that committee may be important.
Yeah, see, like, I think of, like, when we do our union, um, roundtable, we have a rotating board member every month. And that, but that's a district work group, that's, you know, Connie, Leaden, we're talking, we have that element, we have a board member there just to hear, be able to know what's going on, you know, that element rotates every month, same kind of way, that could be done, but, this is all your call on how you want to look at that, so I'm just bringing it to the board, because I've, I've found there to be, we, we're having an issue.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, good, 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 okay. Uh, so moving on, we'll go into consent, uh, we'll, uh, personnel recommendations, uh, T C A P's district course catalog, field trip requests, bids, services, and purchases. Does, do I go through each one of these?
No, and I can just say those have all gone through committee, curriculum, and finance this week. So now we're forwarded, um, to STEM was, uh, all those state consent, right?
Except for.
Was it the laptops that we brought?
Yes.
The laptops.
No, 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 we did make it consent, yeah, we did go.
So everything was consent?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Just philosophically, when I report out on finance, I'm going to be relatively short, um, because if things have gone to consent, I'm going to assume unless somebody pulls them off, that there's no reason to go through great and elaborate detail on them.
And again, you can always refer to the video that's there, always available, all that, at any point.
I mean, the meetings get long enough, you know, me, you're throwing in on something that we've already, in essence, approved.
That's right, and that's like even on curriculum, when we, you know, yeah, like, yeah, there's things we just skip over on the main, um, meeting, you know, yeah, anyway, I don't know what I'm saying.
I think it's always just key, key highlights, level points, you know, and.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, so those will all go to consent, and then, um, so the meeting minutes, uh, from the April twenty eighth study session, uh, will also be a part of that consent. Yes, part, be a part of that consent, and then our discussion items, so, again, we're gonna change, A, board committee updates and assignments. Um, next item will be a school safety update, uh, next discussion item will be the resolution in support of Northwest, uh, education services general fund operating budget for two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six. There'll be the recognition and appreciation for two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five district retirees resolution.
So let me pause a second, so, we will, we have the, um, the recognition and for as our retirees, but we will wait till the discussion, I'm gonna actually recognize and identify them by name.
Okay.
So.
Got it.
Okay.
Are they getting awards?
No, we have a, we have a, a re- retirement dinner where we invite all of them too, but this is just an opportunity publicly, every one of their names read off, to, for the board to acknowledge and celebrate them.
And the resolution, or the recognition is read, the recognition statement, okay. Um, and then the teen pregnancy awareness proclamation resolution. So those will be our discussion items, and then public comment, closing remarks, and adjournment, so that's the May twelfth.
So let me give you one more item that, um, Ty had mentioned.
Yeah.
Yep, and sent, um, you know, question about the, uh, study session, um, the site. Um, he had actually made the, the request that it be moved back to here, um, so that it could be televised, um, and in this room, from a transparency standpoint. Um, you know, and we originally moved to the I S D just because of space and tables and all that. They may be able to video, I didn't think they were in the past, but Ty did show that they do have their board meetings on video. Um, you know, so we could either move back here, so that could be done, I could make a request from the I S D whether that would be available. It would have to be their person, Larry doesn't run their equipment, all that kind of stuff. Um, but need thoughts of, does the committee want to forward that to the board for discussion with that, or how does the committee feel about that?
The only problem I have with that is that part where we broke out into small groups, that is going to be very difficult to video, if you've got three different groups. And then there's that time where you're actually trying to work, and how in the wor- that's a real hard thing to follow on the video. I mean, there's some real logistics.
Let me give one other piece to this, the piece that I think, you know, that the board gave feedback at curriculum is, they would like some opportunity to hear some data and see some data relating to what Jesse and Dan have identified as, possible top, you know, academic goals. Um, you know, I did leave the meeting, to be honest with you, feeling like, you know, the data that we had reviewed was good, but, it wasn't the whole piece, and I think we kind of got a little bit away from what Nick was saying about, you know, being data driven, and then we just started throwing things out there in the end. And so, you know, I do think it'd be good for the board to hear just an hour of Dan and Jesse's rationale and their thoughts of, what drove their thoughts for those metrics and those things, the question is, do you want to have it? Uh, Ty also mentioned it could be, uh, you know, this is a lighter agenda, do you want it, Jesse and Dan to do that here? Or we could have it in the first hour, we are starting at five, of our next study session, uh, for the, for the strategic plan, hear that, board be able to ask questions, have it in their mind, and then put that into, plug that into the objectives and goals of the strategic plan, so. I kind of leave that with thoughts of, would you want to add that piece to this agenda? Would you want to kick it to the study session, and then there's the question about location of the study session? And if it's, if it's at the I S D, do you want me to inquire about video?
I personally, and go ahead, Scott.
I, I think it's just gonna be redundant, we're gonna, if you did it at the board meeting, we're gonna have to do it again for the study session, because none of us are gonna, retain it, even if we have it on paper, so I think it's, I, no, I'd do it with the study session. I want it to freshen my mind.
And again, I think we have to remember what the, what the strategic planning process is all about. It is about that we've taken these surveys from students, community members, staff, we, we have that data, the data's been analyzed and data driven. Um, you know, uh, do I think hearing from Jesse and Dan on some of their thoughts around that, yes, absolutely. But I don't believe that that needs to be televised for anyone else but the working committee of trying to drive that strategic plan. Um, I mean, that's, I, I mean, do I think that the community could benefit from that? Yes, but I don't know that I think that that's, the role of, I, I just, the role, I, I think, I think we have to, focus on the strategic plan and, and the goal at hand, and, and instead of trying to, I mean, we all had a chance to fill out surveys, right? I mean, that was our chance, me as a parent, myself as a community member, my kids as students. Like, we had that opportunity to give feedback and, and, um, that's where the data comes from on driving what we're going to put in our strategic plan. That's my opinion.
Beth, and, and then the question is, is, you know, do you just kind of want to leave that alone as a committee, or do you want to kick it as a discussion item for the full board to weigh in on that?
Well, we're also gonna have a new board member, and when you think about it, we, we've got three new board members, actually. And I'm new ex- to the, the strategic plan. So, um, I think the whole idea of having it continue as a working, activity would help a lot, um, because Ty also, uh, had a memo, and in it, he was questioning some of the data in some of the old, uh, what actually, was accomplished in the old plan on certain parameters, and he was asking for that to come, also on the next board meeting, on the twelfth, not the study session, the twelfth. Which would be part of a review of supportive data as you are closing out the current plan. From what I understand, so I think you could get pretty confused if you were J Q P- public out there. What are they talking about, and how come they're covering that but not covering that, and weren't those two related? I, I just, uh, it's a little confusing, potentially.
Now, can Dan and Jesse present to us at the strategic planning session and, and go through kind of some of their logic?
And I mentioned that at the curriculum committee, that, you know, starting at five, they could go from like five to six and do that whole, you know, give the data, give that element, and then Nick and, and Matt and, and Kathy would pick it up after that and say, okay, you now have this data, that you've been formed on, and, you know, to think about how it fits all in, you know, um, you know, that, that's one way, or like I said, you could have that, the board meeting, and then at five o'clock, you pick up with Nick and, you know, take that, so, you guys is complete.
No, and I, and another point, I mean, I remember when I joined the board and I questioned, why do we go offsite? This doesn't, I didn't understand going offsite to, um, do strategic planning, and it was all about, like, change of atmosphere, change of the table configuration of more working, um, so I, I, I think that I've, I'm, and I'm in favor of just keeping it the way that it is as a working meeting.
It needs to be a working.
Yeah, versus worrying about being filmed, and are we doing and saying the right things, or, you know, I just think it needs to be a working.
And it's not that the general public isn't, they can be there in attendance if they want to be, I completely agree with Erica, that it needs to be us. It's, it's, it's a markedly different meeting than a regular board meeting. And I don't want to formalize it here, because you aren't going to get the interaction that you're looking for.
I mean, obviously, it is, you know, Josie had mentioned at curriculum, it still has to be a public meeting, it's posted, as all that, we have seats and stuff for that element. You know, that's there, but.
We don't do public comment, I don't believe, so, I mean, it's, they can observe us all they want to, and ask questions after it's over with.
They could in the second set of public comments. And you know, when it's announced on the website, that can be very clearly said. You can listen to the process, and if a question comes up, bring it up in second public comments.
But let's not interrupt the flow of the groups interacting with each other and where we're trying to get to.
So I think the committee right now is saying, you know, to not add it to the agenda, to stay status quo with what the plan is from that standpoint.
I think that is.
You know, at any point of two members change their mind, they can, at the board meeting, ask it to be put as a gen item, so.
Well, you could point out if, if you felt it was appropriate, in discussion or in consent or whatever, and just say, you know, that an oppo- this is how we're doing it, and this is, where your opportunity for comment is. You know, you're, you're all encouraged to come, stay through, bring a good book, whatever, you know. But then if you need to make, uh, share your thoughts, there'll be a second opportunity for you.
Yeah, I wouldn't move it, I, I think it's real important to get outside for strategic planning.
And we sort of did that thing, didn't we, when Christine, Christine did the presentation, when we were talking about facilities in preparation for the bond. You know, and she did that big, very good presentation.
Our priority.
Yeah, and it's kind of, you know, they'll, they'll give you, like I said, Jesse did have done a nice job of identifying, you know, maybe what are some of the metrics to look at, what the specific goal, you know, should be based on those certain tests or graduation rate or whatever. You know, I think that there's, you know, twelve, fourteen there, and the board may say, hey, we like those three, or those two, or there's a secondary and elementary, as we talked about, so. But I think the board will get that, you know, get Jesse and Dan's rationale, their thoughts, that they presented to me, and we agreed that I forwarded to the board. Um, I think there's that opportunity to do it, the question is just, you know, I, I did leave, and I agree with Ty, that when I did leave the, the, the first round, I, I thought that was missing, I really did, and so I think it's important that we have that. And so it's just the board's de jour, if, A, we have it, then if not, is it this next board meeting, or right at the beginning of that study session? Think the consensus I'm making is do that, but at the beginning of the study session, and at this point, you're not forwarding it to the full board for the agenda.
Right.
As a discussion.
Yeah, and I do agree it was missing, I, I, it's been in my folder, I think it's actually in my front seat of my car right now, because.
I think we all have a consensus on that.
As to how they.
And I think it'd be good to be able to pu- put that, now where does that fit under the, the thing, and I think that there's a consensus of that, and so, based on the feedback at this point, that's what I'll prepare our, our team for, unless some reason, some, again, two board members, add it to the discussion of the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and, uh, on May twelfth, otherwise, I'm gonna move forward with that thought.
Okay, perfect. And I think that was that, did we have one more? Um, no, that was, that was that, okay, okay, so, um.
Well, I, I would just ask one more, more question, and that is, at some point, do we have a review? Another review as we close out the current strategic plan?
As to what we've accomplished?
What, what we felt that we accomplished.
So we did, we did prepare that for the last one, but just because of time, because of our unfortunate situation, it kind of got pushed aside from the last one. So if the board, at some point, either in this process of strategic plan, want maybe it be to take fifteen minutes and do that, a little bit deeper of what was originally planned, we could. Um, or we could do that, you know, at a later board meeting, just to discuss that, it's up to the board when you would want to hear that.
Cause I would, I would like if anyone was out there kind of following it to feel that, you know, the strategic plan just wasn't a, a planning exercise, but it actually was an evaluation exercise in closure.
Can I give a suggestion that maybe at our July board meeting, when we would be probably transitioning, that we say, here's our successes and things we felt good, or things that, you know, that we didn't maybe go as far as we wanted to, and then we kind of put that to rest, and now introduce our next one. Cause it kind of, that's the idea, is like fiscal year, July one, kind of start their next school year.
If we've got, I don't know, five goals, six goals, or whatever we had there, and we've only made progress to thirty percent on two of them, that should also be part of the new plan, that we need to figure out a way why we didn't get there, and what do we still have to accomplish before we even start in on a new goal for that.
And I can give you some opinions, that what I will tell you is, is I do think the things we did not make the progress we'd like to, were identified in the data that we went over, um, in the study session. So for instance, I'll give you an example, I'll give you an example, like, you know, I, I am not satisfied at, you know, the, the progress we've made towards like bullying and harassment, right? Um, I think it's a really hard thing and things we got to continue to strive for, that was identified in the data from our public, our, our students, our staff there. That's one example, I can't think of something that we didn't make great progress in, that I'm disappointed, you know, that, again, but knew it was tough work, that I don't see reflected in what came out la- at our study session.
Which one, the, the one we just attended?
Yes, the one we just did.
I didn't, I didn't walk away with understanding where we were at vis a vis other previous goals.
And ha- and happy, like I said, I think maybe, you know, at, if you want, in this next study session, we, I can do that. You know, we had the successes, Nick asked me for the successes, but we can easily add, if you want me to give you a synopsis of here are some key ones that, we didn't make the progress we would have liked, you know, to give the board that, and then you can decide if it's reflected in there or if it's missing.
Can you quantify that, or is, yeah, we sort of got there, we didn't get there?
Some of them are so, like, again, you know.
Not measurable, I mean, like, it's hard to measure, this is, like, there were some things that were, we knew priority one, you know, first year, priority two, you know, three year, five year, but there were some that are forever going to be, you know, just, I felt like.
I'll give you an example of some data that did, that was actually good data that showed bad. So when we look at bullying, we had a lot more, um, documented,
Incidents.
incidences of bullying, right, okay, than we did before. We really think that's a direct result of the process we put in, and making sure that we were documenting versus before, when we probably weren't documenting, those and identifying them, that they were addressed, you know, so I can show it, so the board actually has seen that data. You know, that we, we, we have, through the last, every quarter, we did a presentation on where we were in the strategic plan and the goals. But, and you would see, like, that's one right there, like I said, the data actually shows one, but we actually think, now that we have a system in place. now that we have a system in place and identifying, that now if we are consistently doing that process, and then we start to see the numbers going down, we've done something. You know, from that standpoint.
That that whole presentation on bullying, and that was a while ago.
Yeah, see, that's, that's what Ty and Sarah and I will miss in terms of context.
I know, it's hard, you know, we're.
I just need somebody to do five minutes on where we were at, what we've instituted, and here are the numbers, so now I have a new baseline to work from.
And the thing is, I think with the bullying thing, I can remember thinking when when that was being talked about, that is a very fine line between where you're being bullied and when you, as the victim, become the bully to deal with it. And then you get into this run around
It is a complex thing.
Chasing your tail. And that's why the whole idea of, uh, what is it, restorative justice? Where you get the people sitting down and talking about it, and beginning to understand how their behavior is perceived. Hopefully, in a
And that's an item, I think we made progress in creating a building. Again, but I can't give you, it's quantitative versus, it's qualitative versus quantitative in that way, you know.
I'm just frustrated with strategic plans that didn't put in place and can't be measured.
Yep, but but you gotta know that some things that can't be, you know, and it's still not a goal they're not trying to address. I think, though, to the point of, I think the board has has given us clarification of those things, though, that we identify that can have quantitative numbers, we would like to have those.
Well, even bullying, you can, I mean, again, given you've established a new baseline, okay, from this point forward, you would expect the incidence of bullying.
And again, I think now we could, I think, when you don't have a process even in place that works well, or consistency in how it's documented or coded, like, we finally, in the, in this rendition, got to that. And now it's the ability, and the board saw those numbers, so now it's gonna be interesting that we have that process, do we start to see those go down? And and what are action items to try and make that happen?
The other thing is, you may find out that what you thought you were looking at to change gave you a better understanding of what was actually going on. So you learned something you didn't know you were gonna learn. And that is actually what I think happened with bullying.
Yeah.
Um, I think that we had perhaps twelve is quite a handful. And, you know, even Scott was saying, well, yeah, six to nine. So, not quite try to change the world attitude in the strategic plan.
Why don't we go kind of go to this point of, I will plan also in the study session of doing a fifteen minute a quick overview of of those successes and of some areas that, you know, we did not hit to the the mark that we felt we would have liked to, so the board at least knows what that is, and then going and you can see if those are reflected or not in the work that's been identified so far.
We can do that, but be prepared for a little bit of discussion on whether people agree with where your definitions of bullying. And that may happen too.
But then the question is, is, again, I think Nick's gonna push on you that we're not trying to fix it there. I think if the, if you go, if the board goes, we need to clearly define those, then that's a part of the piece.
But you gotta be really clear and honest with what you're trying to do.
Yeah.
You know, because otherwise, you keep going after the wrong thing. So, but anyway, it's fascinating.
For context, I used to get really frustrated when we saw test scores that were going down in certain areas, and the response was, well, it's a bad test. Yeah, and and tho- those kinds of arguments don't resonate well with the public. They they just don't, but, so I just want to make sure that we're moving forward with things we can quantify and validate.
And if you've seen what Dan and Jesse put together, they have some of those items.
Okay.
But that's why sometimes I think I should take the test, and then I'll have a feel for the sucker. Maybe I won't pass it, wouldn't that be fun?
You can get it to do, that's the question.
Oh, I got it. It actually had invitation to the doctor program, but I didn't do it.
Fair enough.
Ah, okay. Good discussion. Uh, so moving on to informational items, human resources, so I'll defer to kind of deal with. Very quickly, just as a staffing update, because guess what? I don't have any board policy updates for you guys this month. Woo, look at that, right? We are, we are up to date with all, not only our adoption of the new policies, but also any of the revisions that had come in during that process, the board has now adopted. Um, so we're really happy about that, getting them all on the website, so that they are live for our community to be able to access. Um, but from a staffing standpoint, we, as I mentioned earlier, we're thirty-nine retirees across the board, a number of them being our certified or teacher staff. Today, we finished our last mission-based budget meeting with elementary, we had done secondary previously. And so we know where our vacancies are going to be, so despite, um, you know, budget challenges and those sorts of things, given the number of folks that we have, either retiring, resigning, or going on leaves of absence, we are going to be, um, hiring across multiple subject areas at the secondary. Uh, we've had our core postings up for math, science, ELA. We've, we've had those up for a while so that we could get ahead of the candidate pool. Already held our first round of math interviews, we've got additional interviews coming up for the remainder of those positions. And then, as I said today, finishing elementary, we'll have a good idea where our elementary vacancies um will be, and we'll get those up as well. So we really want to get ahead of the hiring. Obviously, we've been very, very fortunate to have great candidate pools. Um, that's not the same for a lot of my colleagues across the state, but it's the sooner that we can lock those individuals in and get them acclimated to our community, the easier the start of the school year will be. Because we have actually been hiring Labor Day weekend the last couple of years, and that's not a super fun place to be.
That's right.
If you're gonna go to the front.
Right, exactly. And you know, our, and just as a side note, when we do that, our teachers are so amazing, because we're hiring teachers literally four days before they're supposed to be in a classroom, and they rally together, put together their classrooms for them, you know, help them decorate, get things ready for their students to start, so, um, but we don't want to have anybody under the gun like that, if we can avoid it, so. Um, and the only thing I would add is we continue to have open interviews for all of our positions across the organization. Next one being May fourteenth, which is a Wednesday, from eight AM to ten AM, here at the Glenn Lewis Administration Building, one zero zero down South Oak Street. And then our June date is June eighteenth, again, a Wednesday, and again, from eight AM to ten AM. Perfect. I'll meet our teams, they're amazing.
Perfect.
Perfect. Okay, good, any questions?
If we have, for instance, elementary teams who we think would like to move over to TCAPs, do I send them to you?
Mm-hmm, yes, absolutely. Send me an email. What we always want them to do is to go in and fill out our TCAPs application process, but if there are recommendations from folks, we can go in and then pull them into an interview pool. Are you gonna go rec- recruit?
Yeah, I've got two of them that have approached me. But they want to make sure they don't lose their current position because they've applied for a TCAPs position, so they're worried about confidentiality.
Yeah, we, uh, typically, we will go through an interview process, we, the candidate will be told that they are a finalist for a position, and then we start our reference checking process. So typically, we put on our job applications, when might we be able to contact your current employer? And we try to respect that understanding, that sometimes people like to be able to apply in confidence. We all know the only position you cannot do that for is for superintendent, that's fully out there. Once you're selected for an interview, the world knows it, but for the rest of the positions, we can expl- individuals, and we expect when folks come in to interview us, or interview with us, they're interviewing us too. They want to make sure it's a good fit. So we're not so presumptuous that, you know, we're, that everybody wants to be with us, they want to make sure where they're leaving, um, and where they're coming to are a good, the better fit for them.
That's great. Uh, okay, communications update, uh.
I just have one quick one as well today, and that would be an update on our Safe Routes to School. Uh, this is definitely a very long process, if you've ever been involved with the Safe Routes to School application. Uh, we did recently finalize all of the surveys, which included our student and parent surveys, along with, we had to do like a raise your hand tally each day for, uh, I believe it was three days consecutively of how kids made it to school that day. So those have all been completed, and our next two steps is that during the week of May twelve through sixteen, we will have volunteers doing walking and biking audits, uh, along the um Frankie Road area and along the Buffalo Trail. And that will um include just head counts and taking photos um of the area and things of um any type of note that the person doing that particular audit might notice. So whether it's crazy traffic or um something that looks unsafe, they'll, they can take pictures of that and include that in their notes. So we will have that, uh, we will do it both morning from seven, ten to eight, twenty in the morning, and then again in the afternoon from about two thirty to three thirty-five in the afternoon. After that, we will bring together the Safe Routes team, that does include individuals from Garfield Township, Michigan Department of Transportation, um, a handful of people here from from TCAPs, um, and then we have a couple of parent volunteers, and then, of course, our principal. And uh, we will have a virtual meeting and come up with the next steps, and that, at that point, should allow Safe Routes to School the opportunity to give us the green light to go ahead and uh continue with the process. So that kind of goes through a phase, and then they say, okay, keep going, or pull back, let's back up a little bit. So, um, thus far, everything seems to be going very well. Um, the one thing that did come up is that Frankie Road may be undergoing a reclassification. Um, and I'm getting information from David Fairchild from uh MDOT on that. I don't have a full report on that detail yet.
From MDOT or from Grand Travers County?
Uh, waiting from a report from David Fairchild, who's with MDOT.
Okay. Don't know.
Ginger, just for reference, I know you've been working super hard on this, how long have you, how long has the process been up to date today?
We s- we investigated wanting to start the process, uh, last September, I believe we started.
A year ago, September?
Twenty-three, okay.
But then we had a class that we went to last summer. And so that first, it was just, you put your information in, you don't really do much other than kind of wait. Um, and then we had to wait for the school year to start, and then once the school year started, this past fall, then we could start with some of those more actionable steps. So, it was a lot of, um, it's a lot of way around. I think just because there's um the state MDOT involvement, and so many
Pieces and parts.
Pieces that are out of our own control. So it is, it's definitely a a beast of an application process.
Thanks for all your hard work on it, I know there's a lot of people that are thankful, so.
Yeah, it's been a good learning process.
Yeah, good.
So, you know, uh, there is a question with this, that I've had a a couple of board members, Holly was one, um, before she passed, that, you know, was wondering about the Frankie Road crossing there. Just, uh, you know, we can still wait a little bit, you know, if the board wants to, you know, give it a month or two, kind of see what happens you know, with their thing, but there was some, you know, conversation. Obviously, to fix, you know, to to put a crossing across Frankie Road that leads the Buffalo Trail to West Middle School, um, you know, we we cannot use bond dollars for, we have clarification from Trune, because you're doing, you know, a a pad would need to be done on the, on the Meyer side of the road. One flashing lights would be done on that Meyer side of the road. And we don't own that property, so we cannot use bond dollars for that. Um, the other side of the road, really, I think, at this point, would just need the light. Um, that, you know, that's questionable, they could see, but, you know, it would take general fund dollars for us to do any of this that we're trying to do through the Safe Route to Schools grant. Um, and, you know, when we've talked to Meyer, I think they've been willing to engage in that Safe Route to Schools grant conversation with that. Um, but if the board, you know, wants any other thoughts on that, or a different process, you know, it, you know, I would just need clarification, you know, now or in the next coming months. If the board wanted to discuss that, you know, it would need to be added to an agenda. And so, you know, I don't know if you want to kind of give it still, a couple of months here as we get through the summer with that, and where you want to go with that? If the board feels there needs to be discussion on that sooner, um, you know, just would need that feedback, you know, from from the board at some point, you know, here and in the future.
I mean, I think I, I think it might need to be sooner. I mean, I feel, um, just having been through a lawsuit and, you know, um, knowing that there's been an accident there, um, I just feel like we could probably talk about general fund dollars, and what does that look like, and what could be done there, I mean, and what it might cost.
You know, and and rough estimates we had at this point is probably around a hundred thousand dollars. You know, um, you know, if the, if this committee wanted me to gather that information, have that, and then for the next executive committee to present that, to the executive committee, all that information, we can have Christine, and then at that point, decide if maybe next month, do you want to put it on as an item? Um, you know, we could do that.
I would like to do that, because if we could, if if we decide as a board, that's the direction we want to go, um, you know, could the work possibly be done this summer?
Uh, you know, it, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, I mean, the the thing is, we gotta go back to Meyer. Meyer has agreed to be a part of a Safe Route to Schools grant, not something that the board just is doing. So like, I, it it's gonna take some finessing and a lot of work to figure that out, if that's the direction the board wants to go. You know, and then do we abandon the Safe Route to Schools grant? Do we look to try and see if, you know, one of the conversations was about sidewalks along the um west side of Frankie Road that could go down and it and move kind of the Buffalo Trail a little bit down to the end, the bus entrance of West Middle School? Ginger and I walked that with Ashley Walter, um, about, I don't know, seven, eight months ago, I think. Um, you know, it's possibly something to shift. So there's a lot, it's a lot of intricacies here. So, um, why don't I kind of gather all the information I can on cost, what that would look like, all that, and then bring that back to executive committee next month? And then you can decide if it's something you want to put on as as a agenda.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that's great.
Okay. And like I said, Holly had brought this to me, that we had her passing and like all that, so I'm just kind of bringing that back, that I, and I know she had expressed that to some other board members, including Scott. And so, um, Scott had did ask me to make sure they got brought up here, and to see where the, you know, the committee might want to go, so. Um, based on what I'm hearing, I I will bring some of that information and and have Christine help me with that for next month.
Okay, because I think several of us have had talked to you about that.
Yeah.
And we've measured that little walk from Montessori up the hill to the parking lot.
Yes. And, you know, we've recommended that everybody parks there.
Dodging the traffic, just to see what a bell on.
You know, we've, we've made the recommendation of of there is room behind Montessori to park and that, and still think there's quite a few focuses, our staff, that want to park, you know, in the lot, and that's where that is, and so, like I said, it's just, uh, I I can give the board what the options are, and let the board, you know, make some thoughts and decisions on it from there.
That's great. Okay, uh, with that, uh, our next executive committee meeting will be Thursday, May twenty-ninth at nine fifteen. It, this, this is a different meeting because of
The retirement.
The retirement, that's right. I knew there was something, I couldn't remember what, so yes, again, no, Thursday, May twenty-ninth, nine fifteen AM, in this room. Uh, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.